Okay, then give that to the clerk. Yeah, thanks. Okay.
Thank you.
I hid my script for myself. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission, the 10:00 AM meeting of February 22nd of 2022. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we remembering the account that we must one day give may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now is the time for public comment.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, sorry. We have to do that first.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick. District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District three, Chairwoman Starkey.
Here. Okay, now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board and on other business under the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then we will take public comment from those who have pre-registered for WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public.
Oh, your mic. It's on. It's on. Okay.
After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do. We have individuals signed up in the room. I'll go ahead and call out the first three names. And just for the record, Commissioner Fitzpatrick has joined. All right, so the first three names, I have Curtis Marsh, Pastor Troy Peterson, Pastor Danny Fields.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Curtis Marsh. I'm president of Sun Coast House Rabbit Rescue, and I'm here to speak about the hopeful ban on the retail sale of rabbits in Pasco County. One thing, we've been doing this with all the counties we've been addressing, and I'm hoping that Pasco will be the...
He did.
Ma'am.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She was asking you to give your name and address.
I suppose I heard your address.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
But she said you did.
No, I'll try and talk.
Sorry.
The rabbit.
Retail, the sale of rabbits.
Yes. So, there's been a concern, we've been discussing with animal control, that, you know, perhaps because of the fact that there's not that large a number in Pasco County, that it may be, you know, not a big deal. But it is a big deal. We've been lucky in Pasco County. We haven't had a hoarding case, so there's that. But in the last two months, we've been contacted by people in Bradenton who bought rabbits in Pasco in holiday. Then they ended up with a hoarding, with three generations of rabbits that they purchased in holiday and then took back to Bradenton. The fact that pet stores are selling products they don't actually know anything about. You can walk in, you ask, you're going to get whatever rabbit you ask for. If you get a small rabbit, you'll get a dwarf, and it won't be a dwarf, because they're just selling you what you want. There's been some concern at some counties that they're worried about taking away a meat source, and we're talking about pet rabbits, not, you know, no one's buying a meat rabbit from a pet store, they're buying a pet. And the last issue is that kind of falls into animal cruelty. Rarely do rabbits have adequate food and water, even in the pet stores. We go in and we check, and they're either out of water, they don't have food, they don't have hay, and they're just not being properly cared for in the pet store. And that's what someone sees when they go to purchase a rabbit, and that's what they think they're supposed to do when they go home. So people are doing things like buying hamster water bottles for a rabbit. So we don't even know how many rabbits aren't making it the first month, let alone living a year. So hopefully you take that in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor, you may come.
Close your file.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed, I guess I should say.
Thank you. I'm a work in progress. Pastor Troy Peterson, 8114 Leo Kid Road, Port Ritchie, Florida. That's the light of the world tabernacle. I've been coming here for a little while, just kind of sharing on the importance of prayer, praying in Jesus' name. And I come here today, and I wanted to thank the Board of Commissions of Pasco County for the National Day of Prayer. One of the things that since the early 90s, Somebody Cares pastors have been gathering people together to do the National Day of Prayer. That is on March 5th, and it's actually right on the other side of the wall. Thank you, commissioners, last year for coming. And Commissioner Mariano, I still got them crosses. I love them. I hand them out to people. And so I just wanted to thank you guys for opening up this county to pray. Number two, for several years, more than 20 Pasco County Somebody Cares pastors have been involved with the 40 Days of Prayer, seeking God for our city. Now, I've only been here six years that I've been doing it myself, but these prayer guides go out throughout the nation. So people are praying specific prayers together in their congregations, in their meeting places, within their businesses. And I just happened to turn to one here today. It happens to be Day 31. Do not judge according to appearance, but judge with righteous judgment. And then this particular day, they're actually praying that business leaders would pursue more than profits, but community-wide righteousness. And I'm like, wow. That's some powerful stuff. So in the years that I've prayed this, I have never found any scripture or any prayer that does not line up with the Word of God. It usually has an Old Testament scripture and a New Testament scripture. This particular day, praying for agricultural workers. And so I would encourage you, just take the prayer guide home and pray with us during these 40 Days of Prayer, leading up to Good Friday. Also, Wednesday nights at the Oasis Coffee Spot, we will be gathering together. Usually, we do that outside on the patio, praying specifically for our government leaders and what's in the prayer guide. Thank you for your time.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Pastor, I think isn't National Day of Prayer May 5th, not March 5th?
Did I say March?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just want to make sure, since the audience was listening.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. May 5th, yes.
I think it's May 5th. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Take care. Make sure I didn't get changed.
All right, Pastor Danny Fields, followed by Renee Rivard, followed by Suzanne House.
Okay. My name is Pastor Danny Fields. I'm with Somebody Cares Pasco. And so what was your...
Pastor Fields, also your address.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry. 7430 Gimbel Lane, Newport Ritchie. The zip area is 34653.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And I'm glad you corrected that, because I was going to in a nice way. Thank you. And so it talks about, and the same thing with this, I wanted to hit on that, and I will share some things about what Pasco County's doing here with Somebody Cares, how we're doing that. And see, it's the city. It's coming together, working together, like the people here are going to be bringing up issues today that you are going to have workshops on and, you know, decide on, and all these good things, so that way that you could come up with the best solution for the people and for the government working together in our communities. So, Father, we just come to You in the precious name of Jesus. We say Your will be done, and we thank You, Lord, that we ask for wisdom, and, Lord, that we come to get Your counsel, and we counsel together here. We listen to the heart of the people in the communities, because they're out there knowing what needs to be done. I thank You that they're listening to the people, but the people realize that they got a responsibility to make decisions with budget, with re-land development, and, you know, businesses, small businesses, and all this, parking, and, you know, all these things with water and sewer that would be in each district. Lord, I thank You for each district here, and all the board members here, and all those that work in the city and in the county, working together, Lord, to come up with solutions that You will do for us and through us as a people. And I pray this in Jesus' name. And so I want to share a list that we got coming up. So Troy talked about the 40 Days of Prayer. So here's what we're doing. We're going to be having Easter egg hunt in the park. And we do invite all those who are willing to come into our communities to share the story. And then we do have police fire department there. We even had mayors and other people that has been there and watched the community grow and work together, like Back in the Blue, standing with all of our first responders. And so on that, we got the National Day of Prayer, like I told you, but we're going to be doing five events in the water park. So this is a good opportunity for the people and the governments working together to get to know one another. I've been here only a short time, but I've got to know some people here, and I thank You for Your service again. I thank You. I respect You. I honor You. And, you know, and it says in the book of Timothy that all prayers supplication would be for all people, though in authority. And so You're in authority, but Your authority is to govern this county. And thank You for what You've done, doing, and will do.
Thank you very much. Okay. Renee Rivard, followed by Suzanne House, followed by Anne Marie. Is it Keniel?
Good morning, commissioners. Renee Rivard, PO Box 81, Cortez, Florida. Fifteen years ago, Petsmart and Petco stopped selling rabbits because they realized they were being dumped at shelters shortly after purchase. Four years ago, the state of California banned the retail sale of rabbits. There are approximately a dozen house rabbit rescues across the state of Florida that are overwhelmed and struggling to fetch unwanted rabbits that are thrown outdoors because there are not enough facilities that take them in. One of those house rabbit rescues is here in Pasco County. Last year, they paid $6,500 just to spay and neuter unwanted rabbits. They are also paying $50 each to vaccinate them against the deadly RHDV2 virus. The virus could spread to our wild rabbits and wipe them out. Your rabbit rescue here in Pasco is full and having a hard time finding fosters and forever homes for rabbits. In September alone, they turned away 66 rabbits. They serve the greater Tampa Bay area, and we are asking commissioners in all five counties for help. The Animal Services Director in Hillsborough County stated, "The rabbit problem is real and has been going on for decades." At an average of $150 per rabbit, the Tampa Humane Society paid $40,000 to spay and neuter 261 rabbits that they took in last year. $40,000. Sarasota in Defense of Animals, a rescue in Sarasota, said that in their 30 years of operation, they took in over 5,000 rabbits and turned away thousands more. Even the salespeople at the retail stores that sell rabbits have told us that cute bunnies are an impulse buy and are dumped when people realize how expensive they are and that they are hard to care for. We have also brought up the point before about retail stores selling underage rabbits. Florida statute 828.161 states that it is unlawful to sell rabbits under two months of age to be used as pets. A pet supermarket manager in Pasco County admitted to your Animal Services Director that they put six-week-old bunnies out on the sales floor. Two pet supermarket stores in Sarasota admitted to me they had four-week-old rabbits and six-week-old bunnies in their stores. The problem of unwanted rabbits is getting worse. Rabbit rescues are seeing hoarding cases. The only way to get this problem under control is to slow down the supply with a retail ban. It will not affect 4H. I spoke with 4H people at the county fair. They said they would never give up their rabbits or take rabbits from pet stores because they are not pure bred. Commissioners, we need to stop burning out our rescue people and have to get this problem under control. Please consider retail ban on rabbits to help this situation. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. Suzanne House, 8802 Lagoon Street, Tampa, representing Florida Voices for Animals. Pasco Animal Services said retail stores in Pasco sold over 700 pet rabbits last year, and they're concerned about the amount of offsprings from those rabbits. It's hard to find fosters and homes for unwanted rabbits, and rescues are usually full. Rescues turned away 66, pardon me, Sun Coast House Rabbit Rescue turned away 66 unwanted rabbits in September because they were full. This is a big problem in Florida and in the U.S. Sarasota in Defense of Animals stated in their 31 years, "They took in over 5,000 rabbits and they turned away thousands more." Orange County and DeSoto County have banned the retail sales of rabbits, as well as Key West. The state of California has banned the retail sale of dogs and cats and rabbits. Bunnies are an impulse buy at Easter and Christmas. County-run animal shelters do not take in rabbits, so where do they go? They're dumped outside where they don't know how to fend for themselves. You have the power to help these animals and stop this. Please ban the sale of retail rabbits. Thank you.
Next up is Anne Marie, is it Kencio? And then Erin Moore, followed by Amanda Wallace.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Anne Marie Kencio.
Thank you.
Good pronunciation. My address is 17802 Ridgeway Court, Tampa. I do live in Hillsborough, but I volunteer in Pasco County with a cat rescue organization called Cat Haven, so just to give myself a little bit more credibility here to speak. I do appreciate the time. I'm here also to talk about the rabbits. I also want to encourage you to ban the retail sale of rabbits in Pasco, or to minimum enact a ban on the sale of pet rabbits during the Easter season. Rather than use my own words to state my case, I would prefer to read from select portions of the findings of fact from DeSoto County, Florida's Code of Ordinances, in which DeSoto County banned the retail sale of any dog, cat, or rabbit. I believe that the following findings of fact from the BOC of DeSoto County express my own views perhaps better than I could myself. And I read, "The Board of County Commissioners of DeSoto County, Florida hereby makes the following findings of fact. According to the Humane Society of the U.S., hundreds of thousands of rabbits in the U.S. have been housed and bred at substandard breeding facilities known as rabbit mills that mass-produce animals for sale to the public, many of which are sold in pet stores. Rabbits that are bred in rabbit mills often suffer from health, social, and/or temperament problems that frequently result in costly treatment or even death. In addition to the above-mentioned abuses, rabbit mills are particularly prone to problems of overcrowding. Rabbits can multiply every 28 days. Breeders easily get overwhelmed, which leads to crowding, filthy living conditions, and toxic amounts of ammonia in the air. Rabbits are often treated inhumanely in the breeding mills, and these animals are often viewed as disposable, with the largest influx of abandoned animals being collected annually just after the Easter holiday. The Humane Society of the U.S. estimates that 80% of rabbits sold as Easter or springtime pets are eventually abandoned and cannot fend for themselves. The DeSoto Board of County Commissioners deems a prohibition of the retail sale of rabbits in DeSoto County to be in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of its residents and citizens and the public at large, and that such prohibition constitutes a municipal purpose and will encourage pet consumers to adopt rabbits from shelters and home-based breeders, thereby promoting consumer protection, saving animals' lives, and reducing the cost to the public of sheltering and euthanasia." Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Erin Moore. Amanda Wallace, followed by Shalita Thomas.
Good morning. My name's Erin Moore, Port Ritchie, Florida, 34668.
Which, the street address, please. The street address.
8650 Ravina.
All right. Thank you.
I'm with Operation CPS. They say a parent loses a child is the worst feeling imaginable, because a parent is never supposed to bury their child. And I truly cannot agree more because of the amount of pain and grief that I have experienced from my child being taken, versus unmatched to any other tragedy in my life. So my condolences to all the parents who have had to bury a child. Truthfully, I know that the two are not equivalent, but honestly, that's the best comparison I can come up with to describe the moment CPS snatched my daughter from school. A moment where I felt complete helplessness, where I felt like I failed to protect my daughter like a father should, where I felt sick to my stomach hearing my wife's pain over the phone, telling me they took her, trying to hold her mother while trying to be strong at the same time. The moment had me paralyzed just thinking about my baby girl, crying out for help, wanting to go home, how she was alone. CPS misused and abused their authority to take our daughter away because they felt like it, knowing she is in no danger in no way, shape, or form. The pain of seeing my wife look defeated because her baby was taken from her is a sight I will never forget, a moment cemented into my head. Her going through the emotions, trying to imagine that my daughter is still there, walking around her room, sitting in her room, wanting to hear her plan, wanting to hear her ask me to do something simple as kill a bug, or draw a picture together, or make a TikTok, help her with the homework. I wouldn't wish that feeling upon my worst enemy. Even though I know it was only CPS using a method of attack for my family for personal reasons, and they had no reason to take her besides spite, I still feel responsible because it's my job to keep her safe. And it was all my fault because I have the role as her father, and I let her down. And ever since that day has took place, nothing has been the same in my life. And Operation Stop CPS works hard to prevent other parents from experiencing the same thing. So to them and to those who support them, I say thank you, and God bless you.
Go ahead. Name an address for the record.
Amanda Wallace, PO Box 46602, Raleigh, North Carolina.
Go ahead.
All right. So, like I said, my name is Amanda Wallace, and my organization is Operation Stop CPS. And as I prepared to come and talk to you guys today, you know, I went and I looked at you guys' picture, because I wanted to see your eyes before I stood in front of you and looked you in your eyes, to let you know that there's a problem in Pasco County. And remind you that you are simply just people who chose a career path that brought you to the seat, but the people that sit behind you are the people that hold you accountable to your job. And Pasco County Sheriff's Office is not doing their job. They are kidnapping black children from safe and loving homes. And as Operation Stop CPS, our job is to expose and educate society on the unchecked power of the child protection system and the impact that it's having on your community. This family reached out to us because there's a problem, and our job is to make sure that it's a problem for you until it's solved. We will continue to activate your community. We'll continue to come to these meetings. We'll continue to protest outside until this child comes home. Because a little bit about myself is I've been an investigator for over 10 years in the state of North Carolina. I've accepted reports of abuse and neglect. I've gone out and investigated to make decisions if children are safe. And I hope your county attorney is here in this room, because I need him to understand that as someone that has been qualified as an expert witness in the area of child abuse and neglect investigations, I can testify that this is unlawful and that this will cripple your county if a resolution is not come to immediately. And so we demand an independent investigation by a third party into the illegal kidnapping of this black child. And we demand a ban on the kidnapping of black children by Pasco County Sheriff's Office. So we're not here to ask you if this child can come home. We're here to tell you that she is going to come home, and we're asking you how you want to go about doing it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Shalita Thomas, followed by Diane Coon, followed by Elaine Galbraith.
My name is Shalita Thomas. I live at 85 Patrina Drive.
Is she at the mic?
Port Ritchie, Florida, 34668.
We can hear.
This is my husband. I've been a stockbroker for almost 10 years. We moved from Chicago, Illinois, and Pasco County stole my daughter because a CPI worker made falsified reports because of her personal vendetta that she had against me. They took my daughter out of gymnastics. They took her out of soccer. They took her out of school that she's been at for two years because me and the CPI worker had a misunderstanding because I will not open my door. I live in a subdivision, majority white people, nice neighborhood, and I was racially profiled from the beginning. My child, I have not seen my child since October 22nd. Her mother for nine years. This is unfair. This is so unfair. And can y'all please help me get my child back? Because if I never moved to Pasco County, I wouldn't be going through this. Every day, I woke up, take her to school when she got off. I cooked. We did her tutoring. Monday through Friday, Monday through Thursday was gymnastics because she had it all year round. Then we had soccer on weekends. Where she's at now, can't nobody raise her like I can. I was her mother. I didn't do anything wrong. And when I say they falsified reports, they locked me up. Once one thing, once one thing, they couldn't do something about it, they locked me up on a $60,000 bond and lied. Can y'all please help me get my child back? I did not deserve this. I wouldn't be here if they did not take my child. Imagine y'all children getting took. It's hard. Thank you.
I, thank you. We'll be in touch.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I think Kathy Pearson, I think is going over to talk to her.
If y'all want to go outside and speak with our Assistant County Administrator there who oversees that division, we'd love for you to talk with her.
Wait a second. She can, the Assistant County Administrator can try and help.
Yeah.
But the folks need to know that CPS is not a division under the Board of County Commissioners.
Right, that's a state.
The sheriff is not an employee of the Board of County Commissioners. Sheriff is a separate constitutional officer in Florida, and CPS works for him. Now, the public services may be able to assist you, but it's not, this board can't really intervene in that, in a sheriff's matter.
But it still needs to be aware that you guys are not you guys, but Pasco County and CPI workers are viewed as...
We can't, we can't. So we can't have discussion back and forth like this, but please step outside and speak with Kathy.
And also, Chairman, Madam Chair, she can also speak to Ken Killian, our CPI and Pasco Sheriff's Office.
Well, they're going to have that discussion out there.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any more speakers?
Yes, ma'am, we do. Diane Coon, Elaine Galbraith, and then Lisa Schmidt.
Hello, my name is Diane Coon.
Hello, my name is Diane Kuhn, I live at ninety-eleven Exposition Drive, Tampa. I'm here representing Florida Voices for Animals. Today, I would like to speak for the Pasco County Rabbits. I'm asking that you institute a ban on all retail rabbit sales in the county. A good person will go to the pet store with the intention to buy a rabbit, they more than likely will know nothing about how to take care of one, it's an impulse buy, that will lead to a full-time caging, or rehoming, or animal shelter, but worst of all, they'll end up dumping the rabbit in the wild, which will lead to a certain death. The selling and buying is a year-round problem, but the worst time of the year is Easter, when impulse buying of the cute little bunny is at its highest. Did you know that a rabbit can have its back easily broken by just handling it incorrectly? They squirm and they bite, and they don't like to be held, they are not kittens or dogs. Rabbits are the third given-up pet after cats and dogs. Rabbits can live up to ten years, they are expensive to spay and neuter, and they chew on just about everything, and they need lots of exercise, not a life in a cage. Please consider this ban. This is not a new problem, but we need a new solution to help stop this cycle of unwanted rabbits being dumped and abandoned. This can be a new beginning for the Pasco County Rabbits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Elaine Galbraith?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Elaine Galbraith, I live at eleven-eight-two-five Hickory Nut Drive in Tampa, Florida. And I am also with Florida Voices for Animals. This is about the rabbits. According to the ASPCA, rabbits are the third most frequently surrendered animals at shelters, and the third most euthanized. According to Animal Justice, just like in puppy mills, bunnies are often bred in large facilities. Puppy mills force rabbits to live their entire lives in breeding machine, as breeding machines, confined in cages with no ability to roam, enjoy being with their families, or perform natural behaviors. Bunnies are social animals and need a lot of attention, and can get depressed and eventually die if left alone in small cages, which many of them end up in small cages. A huge number, and this is me, a huge number of those, just-for-the-holiday bunnies, often go directly from celebration to a shelter, and many are released into the wild where they usually die from starvation, the elements, or from predators. Remember, people that buy rabbits as a gift for Easter basically have the mindset that the bunny is a novelty, and don't realize the amount of care the bunny needs to live a healthy life. Even if the pet stores give the person that purchases a bunny a sheet to educate the buyer on how to care for the living bunny, it is already too late, the bunny has been purchased. Commissioners, I'm sure you call yourself animal lovers, please realize that a rabbit is an animal that needs you to speak up for him or her, as they are not able to speak for themselves. Please, for the bunnies, support the ban. Thank you so much, Commissioners.
Thank you. Following Lisa Schmidt is Kim Roxroth and Miriam Parlaw. Please state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Lisa Schmidt, one-nine-seven-six, South Pinellas Avenue, Tarpon Springs, Florida, thirty-four-six-eight-nine. I'm sorry, I've made a horrible mistake. I did not mean to sign up on that paper, I have nothing to address you about, I was told to come for a check presentation as a representative for my work, so, I'm all done, thank you.
That's funny.
Good morning, my name is Kim Rexroth, I'm at forty-four-oh-two Witten Way, Newport Rico. I am the Eagle Watch Coordinator for Pasco County, representing Audubon, Florida. I'm here to speak upon the eagles on Lake Javita, and the wetlands that we are trying to preserve at twelve-two-hundred Tradition Drive. This nest has been reported several years ago, and has fledged over twenty, over a dozen eaglets that we know of, but there is land development happening on this property, and we are asking that the trees be saved because eagles do offer site fidelity. They have attempted to rebuild their nest in those trees, and we are asking that you please preserve those trees and those wetlands for the eagles to rebuild their nest on. We do, we have spoken with U.S. Fish and Wildlife, and Florida Wildlife Commission, and they both recommend that those trees and the wetlands be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Parlaw. And the last individual I have signed up is Cheryl Mertz.
Good morning, my name is Miriam Param, I'm from nine-nine-three-two, Caribou Trail, Dade City, and I have been a Pasco resident for the past twenty-seven years, and worked in healthcare in the local hospitals and health department. I also represent Florida Voices for Animals, a nonprofit group with over forty-five-hundred supporters in this area. Our mission is to educate the public about animal abuse and exploitation, and I think I've shared some of this, but the breeders really are an example of abuse and exploitation, and they're like puppy mills, you've heard that, and they can have extreme conditions in the way they're raised and kept. And then, transportation, very stressful, animals are packed tightly into little cages, even bunnies, chicks, and ducks can be included and all that. And then when they get to the retailers, even well-meaning retailers can keep them in cages, with wire cages that are very painful to their tender little feet, and as you've heard, they may not have adequate food and water, and that's what people see when they buy. And then finally, the consumer, probably mostly unaware, you've heard, I'm not going to repeat the things that have been said about, they don't know how to handle them, and they're very fragile and can be hurt. So, the thing about it is, is that they're viewed as toys for the kids, or things, even by the well-meaning adults, they talk about it replacing it, not a sentient living creature. And as you can, you've heard other things about them being injured, but they can get sick very easily, and they're good at hiding that until sometimes it's too late. So with all these concerns, that you've heard about the handling, and the illnesses, and the injuries, and just the way, they can traumatize children. At the Animal Services Committee, we had someone that mentioned, how as a child, they went through four different sets of rabbits that kept dying or disappearing, and even fifty years later, a woman was saying, her and her sister were traumatized by that. You know, mental health, you know, is very important for child well-being, so just experiencing that, and the fact that they can be scratched in the face, or, as was mentioned, can bite. So they have no place to go, most of the time when people decide they can't keep them, so they may dump them. So, education is important, but it's not the answer, it can be put aside. Like, a sheet of paper is not going to do it, they're not going to go to a class, I'm sure, about the proper care. So, working in healthcare, I know how many times people are handed medication instructions or discharge instructions, and they don't read them, they say, "Well, nobody told me", well, it wasn't written in paper. They're not always going to read those instructions, so, you've heard, they've been already banned in many places, even in Florida, in other states, New York City back in twenty-fourteen banned rabbit sales. It's really going to happen, it needs to happen, let's be a leader, we don't have that many here, it's not going to be that difficult, I think, to be a leader innovator and start with Pasco as well to this campaign, which hopefully will go statewide. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any more, Nikki? Cheryl Mertz, and then I have three on WebEx, okay?
Good morning, my name is Cheryl Mertz, and my address is four-zero-zero-seven Barwood Court, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-two-four. And I am the Hillsborough County Eagle Watch Coordinator for Audubon, Florida, and I do monitor nests in Pasco County, East Pasco County, of one, the nest that I'm concerned with at this point is, are, there is no nest that exists, but the trees that still exist for the eagles at Lake Javita. And I am here to represent the eagles and Eagle Watch, to make sure that the trees are protected in the wetlands and on the property where the eagles do nest, the nest is not there right now, but we do believe that they will be returning in next season to nest in that area. They are very attached to that, to that property, and they're there seventy-five percent of the time, I do watch them on a weekly basis, and I wanted to just be here to protect the eagles and make sure that their trees are protected, along with the wetlands that are very important to that area as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, you said we have three online?
Yes.
Is there anyone else in the room here that wishes to address us? Well, line up. Anyone else? Because, if, if anyone else wants to, please line up behind him. Okay, that'd be our only speaker in the room, come on up, and then we'll go to our online speakers. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Kevin Bone, I live at thirteen-thousand Thoroughbred Lane, Dade City, Florida, three-three-five-two-five. I am here to assist the eagle people, I am the neighbor at Lot two-six-four, I also own three other additional lots. Those lots have got the same scenario that we have on Lot two-six-three, a lot in subject, it's encumbered by a tremendous amount of wetlands, native trees, and in the building of my house, which was completed two years ago, we worked with your staff, we worked with SWIFTMUD, we worked with Fish and Wildlife, and we had tremendous success. We were able to, in fact, during the height of our construction, there were two eagles that were born and lived and survived. So I can attest to that if we follow the rules, that the eagles will survive and be able to coexist with us. The problem being is that our new neighbor has submitted plans that show inconsistent wetlands with the county's own plans. I had the opportunity to meet with your natural resource people out there, and he asked me if I had set of plans for my property, for Lot two-six-four. When I compared my lot property that was done by DC Johnson and Associates, it matched exactly with Pasco County's. The plan that they had in their hand that was submitted for approval does not. Its alteration clearly shows that the wetlands have been impacted significantly. This plan was also submitted to SWIFTMUD, and apparently there was no contention with SWIFTMUD on approving the permit. But if you look at your own plans that your own people, staff-wise, have, it will show that there is an issue. This was brought to the individual's attention, that it should be addressed, and that they then could proceed with the construction. I have no problem with whatever homes they want to build, I have no problems whatsoever, but the problems existed when I looked at the staking that was done by their surveyor. The survey stakes are encroaching on my property when we get deep into the wetlands, and we've gone to great extents to preserve those wetlands. And I can tell you firsthand that dealing with your staff has always been a pleasure. I've built five commercial buildings and two homes in Pasco County. Never once did I have a problem with Pasco County Building Department or Permitting Department. I think they're excellent people, they do an outstanding job at what they do, and I think if you have the opportunity to consult with your staff, you will see that these inconsistencies have been brought forth. Now, the owner has chosen to ignore those and proceed with construction without having all the necessary permits, erosion control, and the signage for permits that have been issued. Okay, that's standard business practices. So we're hoping, neighbor-wise, myself, that you would look into this and make sure that this individual, please do it the right way, you will have the best home, you'll have the best neighbors, and I promise you that we'll have a great existence together for the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, and then we have three speakers online. Yes, Madam Chair, we have an individual who signed up as Simone Awolola, and there is a Simone online, but it's with the name of, last name of Russell, I think it's the same person because the email address starts with an R, Simone, so if we could elevate her, thank you.
Yes.
You may state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Simone Awolola, I'm at twenty-nine Bankers Lane Apartment C in Indianapolis, Indiana, four-six-two-zero-one.
Thank you, may proceed with your comments.
Okay, my name is Simone, I'm the mother of Shalita Thomas, and I wanted to go on record and to let y'all know that DCFS has currently kidnapped my granddaughter from my daughter, Shalita Thomas. When they took her, when they kidnapped my granddaughter, she was in soccer, she was in gymnastics, she has been to Disneyland twice, she is in school every day, good grades, up-to-date on her reading log, well-mannered, well-dressed. My daughter is the epitome of a mother that is clearly invested in her child. My daughter started her own business so that she could have the time and money to nurture her daughter. Shalita is a great mother, and she knew she was above reproach, but the pride of being a great mother blinded her to the fact that DCFS does whatever they want to whomever they want, regardless of the casualties. The day DCFS kidnapped my granddaughter, my Taya tuggles from my daughter, Shalita Thomas, she calls me, she was crying so hard she couldn't get it out, she couldn't tell me what happened, so many seconds went by, and the agony in her cry made her pain tangible. I knew at that point that she was crying about my Taya, about her baby, and that it was horrible, and sure enough, DCFS had kidnapped her child. And the worst part of it all, although that is bad, the worst part of it all, it happened because of some disgruntled worker. In my, what I want to know is what is in place for disgruntled workers? When you find them at these factories where they shot up people, something happens to them, and I just need something to be done by this lady, because it's apparent that she has no regard for life, because she has done this simply because her feelings, her feelings got hurt. And, 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 I know that if she did this to my child, to my daughter, she didn't did it to somebody else. And, and, and I just need somebody to put something into place to prevent this from happening again. There was no record, there was no cause on my daughter, they were at the school for three days harassing my granddaughter before they took her, they talked to the teachers, there was nothing, there was no reason, there was no clear and evident, evidence of abuse, there was nothing there, but they took her anyway, they took her anyway. Why? Because of a disgruntled worker, and I need something to get put in place to prevent the disgruntled workers. What they do is...
Thank you very much. We hear you, thank you very much. Alright, we have the next one. Yes, Kelly Harder is up next, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Kathy Harder, my address is twenty-two-eighty-four Chantilly Terrace, I live in Oviedo, Florida, and that's a suburb of Orlando. I'm a retired CPA and the President and Treasurer of Orlando Rabbit Care and Adoptions, and I know you all are learning more about rabbits than you probably ever cared to, but I would also like to add my voice and thank you for the consideration that you're giving to the ordinance to add rabbits to the ban of sale of dogs and cats at pet stores. I understand there is thought to rely on education rather than impose a ban, but I think we know that education doesn't work, other people have talked about that, and if education worked, you might not have had to rely on an ordinance to prevent the sale of dogs and cats. And although I'm a resident of Seminole County, through working with Domestic Rabbit Rescue, the largest one in the Orlando area, we see the impacts of what the sale of rabbits does in the community. We have close to one hundred rabbits in foster homes, but we have curtailed intakes, as you've heard, most rescues have, because... most rescues have, because we have no room. And even if it wasn't the case that we're all full, I would support the ordinance for other reasons, for the humane aspect. You've heard people talk about what happens to the rabbits that are dumped outside and also consumer protection aspects, which I'll talk about a little bit. I also understand that Pasco County Animal Services researched the sale of domestic rabbits and found no data to attribute the abandonment specifically to retail stores. And that may be the case right now, but it can easily change. I would suggest that you proactively add rabbits to the ban to avoid getting behind the curve. If there's no impact to retail stores now, in the future if it does, then you're also going to have to deal with considering what impact to businesses you'd have if you add rabbits to the ban. Animal Services also noted that factors leading to the abandonment of rabbits include lack of rehoming options for pet owners, access and affordability of veterinary care. While edu... We've talked about how rabbits reproduce. Rabbits can get pregnant the day they give birth. So what happens is a consumer may go to a pet store or a breeder or whoever, get two rabbits thinking they have same gender. Thirty days later, they have a litter and by that time, the rabbit's already pregnant again. So you have the consumer with no options of public shelters and the agony of trying to decide what to do with the animal. And we've also heard about how traumatic that can be to the family. I urge you to move forward with adding the rabbits to the ban to avoid the future problem. And in closing, I would just like to say, being an accountant, I am very pro-business, but not at the expense of the lives of living creatures. I consider, I hope you consider that aspect of the ban as well. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. And last one?
Last one, Susan Hall. Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Hall. My address is 2217 Dartmouth Avenue North, St. Petersburg, Florida, 33713. I volunteer with Sun Coast House Rabbit Rescue and I applaud and support all of the people that have spoken up to this point. I don't want to duplicate anything that they have said. Everything that they have said is hugely important. One thing that has not been mentioned is that there currently is an epidemic of a horrible rabbit disease called Rabbit Hemorrhagic Virus Disease II, which is sweeping across the country and is a huge problem. It causes almost immediate death within 24 hours and it's not detectable until it's too late. The most critical way to prevent this from wiping out our native rabbits, wild rabbits, and our pet rabbits is to make sure that biosecurity measures are in place to prevent the spread of this horrible disease until everybody gets vaccinated, which is expensive and not easily available. I've had to go to a number of veterinarians in the state of Florida trying to find someone to vaccinate my personal bunnies and get help for the rescue to vaccinate their bunnies. It's a tremendous expense for the veterinarians to get the certification necessary and to get the vaccine, which is similar to the COVID vaccine in that if they don't use it that day, it has to be disposed of. So my veterinarian says that she is doing this as a public health concern because if this virus gains footage in Florida, we've had two cases in Lake County and St. Johns County, I believe, but if it gains footing in Florida, we're going to see our native rabbit population demolished. And it can easily happen if somebody goes to a pet store, buys a bunny, gets the paper that they're not going to read or doesn't cover enough. And then because of the overfilled situation with all the rescues, they dump the bunny and then it spreads to the wild rabbit population. Please, 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 I'm begging, give us the ban on sales of rabbits from pet stores. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. That is the end of our public...
Speaking?
It is. All right. All right, so members, we will move on to the consent agenda. I have two polls somewhere.
Resolutions.
We got four minutes. I think we get the consent agenda.
You have R2.
Oh, before that? Okay, we'll do R2.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to add C-52 to the poll for just quick discussion.
Okay, R2, please.
Is anyone here from the concourse council? You're talking about RS2?
Yes, they're right there.
Please come up to the podium. I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution first.
We're going to go quick.
Resolution number 22-069, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending the concourse council for their charitable donations to the community and declaring February 22, 2022, a celebration of lights at the concourse day in Pasco County. Whereas in 1976, a group of citizens met to discuss bringing cultural programs to Pasco County. As a result, several theatrical productions were brought to the area. The productions were well-attended, which were supported, which supported the group's theory that a formal organization should be established to encourage cultural services for the area. ANRAZ, the group was originally called the Civic Center Council, but a naming contest was held in 1978. Two of the group, two of the group was renamed the Concourse Council. Today, the Concourse Council is a nonprofit organization that seeks to partner with charitable organizations for the development of activities and programs which will enhance the concourse, Pasco County, and surrounding counties. The concourse property is a 216-acre venue available to host a wide variety of events, including concerts, plays, weddings, family reunions, birthday parties, rallies, and cultural events such as arts and craft fairs, musical festivals, and civil war reenactments and fundraisers. ANRAZ, the concourse council, has worked since its inception to bring programs and activities to Pasco County that serve our community while partnering with local nonprofit organizations. ANRAZ, today, the concourse council's park venue, is home to a variety of spaces and attractions, including Pasco Safety Town, the Rotary Pavilion, and Event Center, the Grand Concourse Railroad and Progressive Air Systems Railroad Depot. This venue also hosts an array of events throughout the year, including the Celebration of Lights. ANRAZ, since 2019, the concourse council has invested over $100,000 in electric and light repair and refurbishing to make the Celebration of Lights event larger for more of the community to enjoy. ANRAZ, this year, on February 22, 2022, the concourse council is donating funds raised during the 2021 Celebration of Lights to Pasco County, to Pasco Safety Town, West Pasco Suratoma, Pasco County Parks Recreation and Natural Resources Summer Scholarship Program, Pasco County Sheriff's Office Explorers Post Number 916, Wheelchairs for Kids, Crew De Forte Future First Responder Scholarship Program, Essential Church Crew of Chasco, and Hope Lutheran Church Hudson. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby commends the concourse council for their charitable donations to the community and declares February 22, 2022, a celebration of lights at the concourse day in Pasco County, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 22nd day of February 2022.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passed. Would you like to address the board?
Sure, well, thank you. Good morning. My name is Liz Meismer. I am the Director of Operations and Marketing for the Concourse Council. And I think everything has been read that we wanted to read, but we wanted to thank you so much for having us here this morning and for presenting us with this proclamation. It's very important to what our mission is. And at this time, we were going to ask for an opportunity to get a photo with commissioners and our recipients of our donations. The donations from the 2021 event and from the concourse council totaled $44,995.
Nice.
We're very proud of that. And also, our Grand Concourse Railroad partner have an additional $4,000 they're donating back to Pasco Safety Town.
Very nice.
And I know we don't want to take up too much time, but thank you again. We appreciate it.
So we're going to send Commissioner Mariano down and the board will stay up here.
Wonderful, thank you.
There's a lot of people. And we thank you so much for all you guys do. I know it's a volunteer organization and we're lucky to have you.
Thank you so much.
Will anybody come up here?
Okay. Yeah, thank you so much.
How are you?
I'm tall.
That's all right.
I'm very excited about, and I see everyone's wearing their pin. I think everyone's wearing their pin, yep. All right, so we will let these guys clear out and then our clerk will read RS1.
Council General Andre Siegel, could you please come up to the podium? Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yeah.
You can correct me if I need to. B, okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution number 22-071, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, welcoming Council General Andre Siegel of Germany to Pasco County and celebrating the document of friendship with the District of Gamersheim, Germany.
Gamersheim, as they say in German.
Gamersheim. Gamersheim. I will, I will apologize now. I will do my best.
All right. Whereas in 2008, Pasco County District School Board, in partnership with Pasco County Board of County Commissioners, established a relationship with Landrat of German, Gamersheim, by forming a student exchange program. This relationship has flourished over the past decade by promoting cultural exchange and economic development. ANRAZ, Council General Siegel is a career diplomat and was assigned to his diplomatic duty to Florida in July of 2019. ANRAZ, Council General Siegel, works to strengthen the political, economic, and cultural ties between Pasco County and the District of Gamersheim. AND whereas, since the council's assignment in Florida, he has been actively involved in efforts to promote the trade relationship between Florida and Germany. These efforts include providing guidance to Pasco County during its most successful trade mission to date. This mission resulted in the document of friendship between the District of Gamersheim, Germany, and Pasco County, Florida. AND whereas, the Board of Pasco County Commissioners and Council General Siegel believe Pasco County and the District of Gamersheim share common values, including supporting their citizens, enabling cooperation, furthering education, and fostering understanding relationships. AND whereas, at the October 26, 2021 Pasco County Board of County Commissioners meeting, Commissioner Catherine Starkey spoke regarding a document of friendship with the District of Gamersheim Rheinland-Pallatinate. Thank you, you know I was going to struggle. Federal Republic of Germany, represented by District Administrator Dr. Fritz Brechel. AND whereas, a motion was presented for Commissioner Starkey to execute the agreement on behalf of the Board, which was subsequently adopted by the Board. AND whereas, the document of friendship establishes the basis for developing and promoting the transatlantic, transatlantic exchange of mutually beneficial information, cooperation, and furthers the relationship and understanding between the peoples of the District of Gamersheim and Pasco County. AND whereas, the document of friendship will continue promoting the increase of economic development, educational opportunities, and cultural exchange. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby welcomes Council General Andre Siegel of Germany to Pasco County and celebrates the document of friendship with the District of Gamersheim, Germany, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 22nd day of February 2022.
Move your pool.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good morning. I'm so excited to have you here with us this morning. And we'd love for you to say some words to the board and then we'll, we have a little presentation and we'd love to take some photos.
Thank you very much. I'm very honored and great pleasure that I'm here. And needless to say, I agree and I'm in favor as well of this proclamation. I think this was really an ex, a very excellent business trip to Germany, the last one you did, but it was not the first. It was building on a long-term relationship developed since 2007, if I, if I understand correctly, starting with the school exchange. And one thing I want to do as soon as I can, when coming back the next time, is to visit the River Ridge High School, which I think is where the, where it started, started from. And I understand they still have an ongoing German program, which I think is very, is the basis for mutual understanding, to learn the language. But what you're doing is building bridges on several levels. First, of course, it's on the administration side, but it's actually the people-to-people exchange that matters and the economic exchange. And I mean, in Tampa Bay, you have the habit of building bridges and the experience. So doing it in a transatlantic manner is even more extraordinary. And I can only congratulate you that you have chosen this reason, this region of Rheinland-Pallatinate, Gamersheim, which is full of innovative companies and where I think you discussed also the dual vocational training model, which Germany has to offer and which we're trying to establish here in Florida, by the way. First, we have it already on the Space Coast with a couple of tech companies and there are ongoing talks to maybe have other company clusters that may be interested in this. So the German consulate will, as we have done before, will try to assist and help wherever possible. I think our next meeting will already be on Thursday with the Economic Development Committee. We will have time to develop a little further the economic aspects of this. And yeah, so this is really a great day and I congratulate you once more on your excellent team that you have who prepared the mission and who carried it out with you and you personally, that you have this engagement to promote this mutual friendship. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And board members, we have a little presentation. We've been holding off talking about our trip until you were here, so they haven't seen any of our pictures. So we, we just have a little, a little slideshow of our, our mission that we did in October, October, right? November?
November.
November. And we were the first economic development and trade mission into Germany in two years, our Pasco County delegation. So this is, go ahead, if you can. So we had Commissioner Fitzpatrick, Representative Mariano, Bill Cronin, Sergio, Representative Amtskills. I think I counted, we had 15 or 16 people on our track, I mean, on our trip. We had five different tracks and we're just going to just give you real, real quickly a little look here at some of the things we did. The council general mentioned the, the innovative business community in that area. And I can tell you Carlsru and some of those communities around there, what, what they have going on is amazing. We actually already have been visited by a company from Carlsru that we met over there with very innovative pipe sheeting. And so we're already having dialogues. And I think a number of the companies are, are coming here and working with Bill Cronin. So in the bottom there, that's, is that the, I think that... So, in, in the bottom there, that's, is that the, I think that's the Mercedes, the Mercedes Truck Factory. We were the first people to ever, outside of the Mercedes employees, go in and see the Smart Trucks in the Mercedes plant there in Germany, so that was, that was very cool. I think it had opened like three days prior, so I bet you haven't even been there. Very cool, very, very cool. I think, is this a video, Derek? So we went to a, a, we went to a school, and what's so interesting about this school is it's in partnership with France, so it's two countries working together. Do we have any, we don't have any sound? So, this is a Smart, a Smart Factory Vocational School, and this, this machine is, it's a very expensive machine. It's, it's well in the million dollars, and they are building, this builds iPhones. And it's, it's, it was amazing, amazing program, and I don't know if you'll see it on here, but there's robots that move the phones around, and it's the technology of the future. So they are training German youth and French youth with this program, so, very cool. What's, what's another, next slide? We did have an event at the, the US Council General Timothy Liston's residence. And, oh, well, before that, we did this, wait, we did this. We signed our friendship agreement, so our, our Commissioners have not seen this yet. We had it framed, and we wanted to make sure that everyone got to see this. It's our first one, we hope we'll, we'll have more agreements with, with other areas around the world, but certainly this was the right place to start, since we spent so many years developing our relationship with the wonderful people in this area, so we'll be happy to pass this down. And here we are, signing it with our good friend Dr. Fritz Brechdel. And, let's see. Then we, we met with the Council General, and here, here's a little idea of where we're talking about, and a little bit of history of Gamersheim. It started as a Roman military camp in the second century, and it's a garrison town. They still have some of the old walls in the downtown, it's beautiful. And there's some more stats there on, on the area, and Derek, what? And we met, this is our second or third visit to this high school. It's a vocational technical high school, and what else do we have here? We met with the different chambers, the IHAKA, and we, for the first time in maybe my six or seven trips, we visited with the craft chamber, so that was my first trip there. So, just a very successful trip. Exhausting. And we never knew if we were going to be able to go on to the next meeting because of all the COVID things that were breaking down, but we had great hosts, and I think, as, as you heard, it was our most successful trip ever, and we look forward to going back and continuing our relationship. So with that, we're going to come down and take a photo, and like, everybody come down, and Jenny, you come get in our photo too.
Does anyone have any questions?
How you doing, sir?
I have more copies, but this is for you. We all have our pin.
All right, folks, right here, please, first, one, two, three. Right here, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I didn't give anyone else a chance to say anything, did anyone want to say anything to the Council General? Otherwise, we'll go back, we may have some more comments.
I also wanted to acknowledge that his partner, Agnes, is here.
Hello, Agnes.
You know, I did want to say something because of the times we're in, and, and what's going on overseas. I just grateful for the German government standing with us, and us with, with our European friends, taking a stand against the aggression that we're seeing overseas, so I'm grateful for that. Commissioner Moore?
Hey, thanks, hey, welcome, we appreciate everything, and I just wanted to obviously commend, or also commend, you know, Chair Starkey too, because she's been working, obviously, with you in Germany for all these years. The apprenticeship program you've helped bring to Pasco County, so again, in your work with the EDC, so thank you to the Chair Starkey and everything, everything you've done, so we appreciate it.
Well, they have the gold standard in manufacturing, so we, we started at the best place, so. Commissioner?
It was a very exciting trip, thank you for coming out today. And twelve to fifteen hour days, I would agree, was very exhausting, but it was very exciting as well. And I noticed when we were there, they were mentioning that we usually send three to five students, and they're able to accept up to 15 students, so I'm going to work on making sure all of our students have that opportunity to get that experience. So thank you for everything you do, and I'm exciting, excited to add more students to the apprenticeship program.
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you.
This is the father of the representative who went on the trip.
I got to meet both my daughters while, while they were there, so. They were both very, very intrigued. My daughter Amber, Representative Mariano, was very, very big with vocational education, so for her hearing about Chair Starkey's passion for this to carry on forward was through. I've had my plaque there since probably 2008, we first started this relationship, so it's, it's great to see it. I remember reading about the German apprenticeship program, just growing up in school, learning how intense it was, and to see it be developed, and now to see Pasco County taking full advantage from River Ridge and the county itself with AM Skills is phenomenal. So, we appreciate the friendship and the continued working with you.
Well, I'm, I'm myself a former exchange student to, to the US with American Field Service at the time, so I'm very much attached to, to the exchange programs that you're working on, so if I can be of any assistance in that, or have sort of a visit of, of anyone who has participated in these programs, alumni, so I would be very happy to do so. And as far as vocational training is concerned, where, right now in the Tampa Bay area, I'll meet several people who are involved in vocational training as well. And I understand there's a current discussion in the Florida House and Senate about a bill sort of subsidizing certain types of high-quality vocational training.
Yes.
And, but it's not through yet, I understand, so I'll try to work out with the interlocutors that I have, that we can maybe sort of push a little bit in that direction.
Members, I think it's tax credits for companies who participate in an apprenticeship program, which I tried to get years ago, but at the time, the, the voucher tax credit was going through, and the father of that one didn't want a little competition, but I think now, maybe there's space. Because apprenticeships are so important and so valuable. So I'm, I'm really excited that our state is embracing the concept, so. Thank you very much, we have more copies of the resolution, Jenny, if you want to grab some of these. And then I look forward to seeing you Thursday, maybe both of you, I don't know. Yes, oh, Commissioner Oakley, sorry.
We certainly appreciate your friendship and what it will bring to your country, and also what we can share back and forth will help our country at the same time, and our district. And really appreciate that friendship, and hope it continues for the, for the rest of the future, and surely it will, so, thank you.
As long as I'm here, certainly, yes.
Well, when we, when we have the celebration of some of the companies that I think we were successful in speaking with in Germany, when they open their doors here, especially part of our life science campus that's coming in the central part of the county, we for sure will invite you up. And then I think there's a few other companies too that are, are going to be coming here. So we're, we're very excited, and we're, we'll be strengthening our relationship, so. We'll see you up here a lot, I hope.
Very much, yes, I'm looking forward to that.
Aye.
And, well, see you on Thursday.
See you Thursday.
Thank you very much for, for having me here today, and, well, good further procedure here today.
Aye, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did everyone get, okay, I don't know where all my props went, but they're around here.
Oh, it's on the wall.
Okay, Derek can come grab those. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda, and I have three polls, and two. Well, Commissioner Mariano added C52 for discussion. I'll entertain a motion for the rest.
So move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, C50, C39, Margaret Smith.
Good morning, I'm standing in for Mike Carbala. And for C39, it's a correction of the amount from $64,696.40 to $64,595.40.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, C51.
Good morning, Keith Wiley, Parks, Recreation, Natural Resources. We had to update the sale, purchase price for the Benchley contract to $395,000, which subsequently updated the total to $1,235,000.
We for approve or revote?
Second? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you, C52, Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, wait, do you need something else?
Fifty-two.
Oh, that's you, okay.
Yeah, fifty-two, I wasn't going to pull this, but I was just thinking about it, I thought maybe a little discussion would be good for it, because it's tough. As Commissioners, we don't know what other, other thoughts are on the process. So with Magnolia Valley, I mean, obviously, the number one thing we did, are doing there is to try to improve the stormwater flooding. The amenity that I talked about a long time ago is by getting the boring test down, checking the soils out to find out what soils can be moved, could be beneficial, could be for sale. And then, if there was going to be some park amenities out there, to what's the best thing to put out there. So I'll say, I think with a potential along Little Road with the properties that's there, a bigger park may be the best use of out there. But as we had talked, Keith, you had mentioned to me that the current plan for stormwaters, they may only dig down 18 inches from the ground, and if we're going to make this a truly water-type of experience, 18 inches is not going to be deep enough. We need to go look at putting more depth to it, so that you can put a kayak out there, put a boat out there, so if some fish can live, we don't need just some small little mudhole pit to be out there. So I think it may take bringing a private person in to go help get rid of the soils. The other thought I had, and I've talked about this before, is over at Mitchell Park, especially the softball fields, they get rained out, they can't play on them, over and over again. If ever there was a time to take a look at taking those softball fields over, and moving them over to Magnolia Valley, might be, this might be the ultimate time. Especially do like a nice three or fourplex that could go right there, that could go a lot, a lot better for the whole softball community. The other option that would give you later on is now you can go back over to Mitchell, where we just spent a fortune, not a fortune, but a, a good sum of money, building a beautiful concession center, where now instead of they just having like three fields to go around, you can actually go look to maybe improve in those fields for down the road, where there could be a much better soccer complex as well. So that's kind of what I'd like, I know Keith is kind of like, they're going to be looking at a bunch of different options out there, and I just wanted to get it out there verbally that I'd like them to consider those things as well. And that's going to take you looking at the viability of, you know, trying to improve Mitchell Field as well.
Yep, so Commissioner, I can add that we're, we are looking at the West Market area and all the park services, and we're looking at the, the MPUD at Newport Corners, Mitchell drainage improvements, renovations at Pine Hill, I mean, the whole area is basically being analyzed for those, you know, to answer those questions, correct?
Yeah, because softball is coming to Starkey. And, and what are you going to do with the softball fields where they're coming from?
So there's been some discussions about converting those to baseball, so for clarification, the fields at Mitchell are for adult play. Softball in the, the Starkey complex will be a youth sports complex, two, 220-foot fields, so.
So, on what Commissioner Mariano was speaking about, about the lakes, does that, can we dig deeper and it still be a stormwater function, because I, I like that idea?
Yeah, so actually, the task order before you is exactly to analyze that possibility. So what we're requesting effectively is to ask for an alternative permitting mod, to take it beyond the stormwater project to create the open water feature that Commissioner Mariano is referencing.
Yeah, I mean, if, if our benchmark is Cascade Park, among other parks, we want to make it as nice as possible. Commissioner Mariano?
So, and to be a little thorough, so when they look at the stormwater capacity, digging down the 18 inches is the only benefit for stormwater? The other benefit is going to be for the amenity part going through?
No, I'm all for that. Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Is Cascade Park the skate park?
Cascade Park is the park in Tallahassee.
Okay.
That was a stormwater, it was a ditch, and, and then it became a really successful stormwater park, but changed downtown Tallahassee, really.
Yes, so we're looking.
Parks can do that.
Yes.
Yes, so I believe that was looking also at Lake Lisa, possibly for a possibility for that, and also Magnolia Valley, and I know you had mentioned previously, possibly a three to, four to five diamonds at the Magnolia Regional Park, so the Magnolia stormwater area would also be a regional park, correct?
So we're, so the 2015 master plan identified a need for a district park in that vicinity, so the goal would be to, to attempt to get as many facilities that addresses a district park, you know, package, if you will, as possible. Obviously, there's going to be some, some restrictions in terms of space, which is why looking at improvements at Mitchell, that's why we need to look at all possible park locations to see if we can deliver the maximum amount of service as possible.
And I am excited about C53 passing today with the land swap for Pine Hill, so. Thank you for working diligently on that, and I'm looking forward to seeing the upgrades.
We are too.
The Big Parks Day.
It is.
A big Keith Wiley day.
I missed the check delivery, I was, I was out with the citizen, but, thank you very much.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hope you all read C52 well. Okay, no, C51, I mean. Okay, we are done with the consent, and we might be. What? Oh, I think we're on a miscellaneous business.
No, you're on to R57.
Oh, sorry. R57. Oh, we're not going to make it all the way through.
We'll save Mike in the rapid discussion for right before lunch.
Okay.
Good morning, Bob Gordon, Pasco County Budget Director. Have the, never mind. So this morning, I'd like to have a discussion with you regarding what we see going on in the economy and the impact that we believe that it's likely to have on next year fiscal year 23 budget. And yes, it is time to begin planning for the fiscal 23 budget. As you can see here, the growth rate in the economy has been about between a two and two and a half percent, just bopping along since 2016, with the obvious exception of the downturn during the COVID shutdown. It's been two, two and a half percent prior to that shutdown, and it's been two and two and a half percent after the downturn in the economy, and we expect that to continue in the future, unless there are what we call economic headwinds that are impacting that economic growth. And there are two areas that we're keeping an eye on, one is the growth in wages. As you can see here, the unemployment rate is at an all-time low, and it has remained at an all-time low in the Tampa Bay region, Pasco County included, for the past couple of years. You can see it was six and a half percent last year at this time nationwide, and yet here in Pasco, it was three and a half percent this time last year, and it remains at three and a half percent. And so what that does is with that low unemployment, and with the very high demand for employees, that's going to cause wages to increase, as we can see here. The Employment Cost Index has increased by about 4%, and that is, the Employment Cost Index measures all compensation, not just wages, but wages and benefits. And so that's increased by about 4%, and we expect that to continue. You'll notice that although wages have increased by 4%, they're not keeping pace with inflation. We're seeing record inflation, primarily because we have forces working on both the supply side and the demand side. So on the demand side, we have the federal government pumping lots and lots of money into the economy through the American Rescue Plan stimulus monies. And on the supply side, of course, we have all the supply chain issues that we've been here about, hearing about for all these reasons. So you figure you got lots and lots of money out there that people are willing to spend, and on the other side of the coin, we have not a whole lot of stuff for people to buy. And so, we look at that, we have a lot of money chasing too few goods. As a result, we have an increase in inflation of about 9.6%, and that's 9.6%. That's the Tampa Bay region, and that's the highest we've had inflation in this region for 40 years. And you'll notice that this inflation rate is higher than the inflation rate nationwide, so. so in the, in the country. Nationally, the inflation rate's seven and a half percent. Here, it's 9.6%. It's always higher in Florida than it is throughout the nation, but that gap is much wider than we would expect. You'll notice one of the offshoots, or one of the impacts of that high inflation rate is the impact on housing. And here, you can see the more orange or amber the color, the higher the change in home values. Pasco County being in the middle, you can see home values over the past year have increased in value between 25 and 35%. We'll notice the Producer Price Index has increased 9.7%. So the Consumer Price Index and the Producer Price Index are very similar. The Consumer Price Index measures the basket of goods for the normal household, what you and I would buy in our household. The Producer Price Index measures what we, as an employer, would purchase. And so that is very similar to the CPI. So Producer Price Index, 9.7%. You'll notice a big driver of that is the cost of construction materials.
Okay, that is a crazy graph.
That is, that's insane.
Yep.
And anyone who's been out trying to buy a two-by-four recently can feel the pain of that 87%. And now you can feel Eric's pain. He's trying to estimate the cost of the new construction projects that are going on in the county, and no matter how much we think these prices are going to go up, they always, they always surprise us, they're always up higher than we think they are.
Well, you might not see as many big campaign signs throughout Pasco County with the wood they share. I'm sure the citizens will be happy with that.
Oh, my gosh. They're going to all be nailed to trees.
So just to summarize, we are expecting that the economy, some of the factors in the economy are going to impact next year's budget. And as we talked about, wages, wage increase is going to be one of those, inflation's going to be one of those. And one of the hidden factors that's going to be here is that the Federal Reserve has already announced that they're going to start curbing inflation. The way they curb inflation, then, is to increase interest rates.
Yep.
And so once interest rates are increased, once interest rates hit about the 4% or higher, that then begins to impact our housing market. So there are fewer people in the housing market once that interest rate hits about 4%. And so the reason that's important from a budgeting standpoint is because fewer houses, that means the taxable assessed value is lower, which means in turn that our property tax revenues are lower. And so moving forward, we're optimistic about the future. However, we do want to keep in mind that we want to, it's important to maintain the level of service that our customers have come to expect. And given the rate of inflation and the increase in wages, just maintaining that level of service moving forward is going to be more and more expensive. And the second piece we want to look at is rising interest rates, as we talked about, reducing the taxable assessed values and impacting, in the long-term, property tax revenues. It's not going to impact next year's property tax revenues because once a house is permitted, it takes about two years for that property to show up on the tax roll. So this is a long-term impact. And so what we're trying to do for the fiscal year '23 budget is to take advantage of these good economic times, and at the same time, look to the future. We don't want to bring on additional costs now that we may not be able to sustain in the future. And so here's Sally's favorite graph. We look at new home permits at record levels. As we talked about, those homes that are coming onboard in 2020, those homes will show up on the tax rolls in 2022. And likewise, that big blue graph, those homes will be showing up probably in the fiscal year 2023 tax rolls. And for that reason, we're expecting taxable assessed values to be at or near where they were last year. You can see the taxable assessed value in fiscal year '22, for this fiscal year, was 10.8%. I've been in the local government for a long time, and I've never seen taxable assessed values that are this high and have been sustained at this high level for a long time. And so we want to prepare for the inevitability that they're not going to be at that level forever. And so for '23, we want to look at, let's, for planning purposes, look at 10.8% being the increase in taxable assessed values. But what we've done here is a sensitivity analysis. We've run three different scenarios. We've done a low, a more likely increase, and then a extreme increase. And so if we just look at that center, 10.8%, which was last year's increase, that would yield an additional property tax revenue of about $27 million. We have an agreement with the sheriff's office because increasing population also impacts his ability to respond to his customers. And so half of the increase in the property tax revenues would go to the sheriff, about 13.6 million. Of course, with an increase in taxable assessed values, the increase to the community redevelopment agencies, as well as the increases to the TIF. TIF, as you know, is used for transportation expenditures. That's about three and a half million. So at 10.8%, that would be an increase of about $10 million in property tax revenue for the board, as well as constitutionalists.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Go back to that slide. So what am I missing that your payment to the CRA is staying the same at each percentage?
Well, the payment for the CRA, so this is a rounding thing, so
Oh.
About 8.4% or a 15% increase in taxable assessed values to CRA is not, I mean, it's going to increase it by less than $100,000.
Okay.
So if we look at half-cent sales tax, so as you know, half-cent sales tax is an indicator of the economy doing well. And also, half-cent sales tax is a shared revenue, and it is shared with the counties depending on county population, not how much is spent here, but the amount of population. And this is an indicator that the population of Pasco County is increasing relative to other counties, other population counties, you know what I'm saying?
No.
This is an indicator.
Our population's increasing faster than the average Florida county.
Exactly. We're increasing faster than other counties.
But I don't know how you tell that from that slide.
Well, there's two things happening here. One is the economy is increasing, the economy is doing better. And since sales tax is based on population, not on how much is spent, as our sales tax revenues increase, that's a sign that our population is increasing relative to other population.
Okay.
So from January 2020, it was 2.75 million, and the amount of sales to December 21st is 3. roughly 7 million?
That's a linear line to linear, to smooth out.
I know it goes up and down.
Yeah, the ups and downs. So that's the linear line. There's some seasonality to the sales tax as well.
And you'll notice in May 20, that was the, where the COVID...
So with the sales, it's gone up about $1 million in revenue?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll bring in an additional penny for each of that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So I wanted to show you the penny for Pasco revenues. As you can see, penny for Pasco is doing well. Penny for Pasco crashed there in May, which is that orange line. That was during the economic shutdown due to COVID. It's doing well. I wanted to show you this because those peaks, those are the sales tax revenues that we get from internet sales. And so the state gives that to us on a quarterly basis. And there had, there, after the Mayfair or the Wayfair court ruling, there was the thought that this was going to have a big increase in the amount of sales tax that we're getting. But you can see in Florida, we were already getting that internet sales tax, so the increase is going to be marginal. And we'll find out next month exactly what that sales tax increase will be for Pasco County. Communication service tax, this is the 2.86% tax that all of us have on our cellphones, tax fax machines, internet, all that kind of good stuff. Because of legislative action and people owning fewer types of things that are subject to this tax, the communication service tax has been decreasing by about two and a half percent per year, and we expect that to continue. As you know, the communication service tax is what we use to fund the emergency 911 center. And so from its peak of 6.1 million in 2009 until today, that's $2 million that we're taking from the general fund property tax to make up for that decline in revenue.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question about this?
Yeah, and I have a question too.
Thank you. Used to fund the 9/11 emergency communications center. When we say used to fund, does that include salaries and benefits across the board?
Yes.
Absolutely, yes. Because I was actually going to bring this up at some point. It was, it didn't mean it was going to be today. But one of my concerns, just for the future of the county as a whole, as we know that the folks that work in the 9/11 or 911 emergency communications center, that is one of the most stressful jobs, you know, on planet Earth, literally, when it comes to stress. If you, if you rank the stress that is, you know, I think it was in, the last study I saw was quite some time ago, I think I looked at it, it was back in the mid, or 2013s, 14, 15s, but I'm sure that hasn't changed. So when we think about retaining these people, what's the attrition rate right now with the folks in the 911 emergency communications center? Is it very high?
I don't know it off the top of my head. Yeah. The other issue is, remember, they stay on probation longer than the average county employee because not everybody they hire is fit for that job all the time. So they do lose quite a few during that probation period, too. So there is that as well. And, you know, I think I know where you're going with this.
Yeah.
We are, every three years, we do a paying class study. We are doing that right now. That includes our 911 center operators and dispatchers. And so that will be part of that, and that will be addressed as part of the paying class.
Right, and for the record, nobody has reached out to me whatsoever in that department to bring this up. I was just, something I was thinking about when I looked at that. I was reading some, again, some articles in some of the areas across the country, which are having high attrition rates and having trouble bringing those people in the centers. So I did a little of my own due diligence to look for studies and things like that. Because the last thing we want to do is not have that area staffed and staffed to the fullest. So, I mean, obviously, let's, let's be honest, and I've said this before, nobody likes when I say this, but if there's positions and jobs out there that have high attrition rates, are very stressful, sometimes we need to pay those people more. Just a fact.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Agree, yeah. And we do that as part of the...
And I appreciate that. I just want to make sure we're looking at that, so.
So I know you're mentioning the, do we, and you can bring it back, the turnover rate, but, and then do we have the mental health services set up for them in, because it is a stressful job?
We do have a program through HR that addresses employee wellness, and there is a mental health piece to that, that they can get access to. Yes, ma'am.
And then is there such a decrease due to all of the free phones that are out there? And then does legislature provide for the offset of costs instead of people having to purchase the phones?
Well, this is, this is going from landline to cellphones.
Yes, that's it. It's going from landlines to cellphone, and the vast majority of people that move down here don't necessarily change their billing zip code with their cellphone provider, which means they are getting taxed on where they used to live as opposed to in Pasco County.
Yeah.
So it's based on the billing zip code of your provider, of what you give your provider. So if your credit card is still billing to a zip code in New York, then you get taxed on their CST, not ours, and we don't get the revenue.
I wonder if there's a way to address that. It would, you know, if they could just, not, we don't want to make everyone change their cellphone number, but if they could address that, I'm sure there's some way with technology...
You don't need to change a cellphone number. I have one from Texas, but my billing zip code's here in Pasco.
Right.
Yeah, so somehow we have to fix that.
It's, I know...
But I have a question, then you.
You know, when Kevin was here, this was an issue he brought up at every legislative session.
Every year.
He's doing that now still. It, DEP, but it's Department of Emergency Amenities. It just doesn't get a lot of traction with legislature.
So I do see a slight uptick, and I'm wondering, for commercial and for businesses, they get, they get landlines, so do we get some revenue from those phones?
To the extent that they use those, yes.
Okay, and Commissioner Mariano?
I mean, I think creating an awareness out there would be helpful. You could start internally with just our own employees knowing that that's going to be a factor, but if we can get places like the Suncoast News to do a story on it and kind of work with Tambry Lane to do some promotion, saying, "Look, we need the funding for the 9/11 center to protect you while you're here, and if you change your address on your billing," and kind of get that word out, it may help.
And compared to most northeastern states or midwestern states, RCST is significantly lower, from some orders of magnitude.
Lastly, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. And what is the difference of the tax rate from a landline to a cellphone?
Well, a cellphone has the additional 35 cents per month that's charged, that's not on the landline. And so that 35 cents is because of the POS, the point of service.
So we actually bring in more revenue from the landline? I mean, from the cellphone?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, interesting.
If they're billing zip codes in Pasco County.
They're billing zip code.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, move on.
All right, tourism has recovered. Folks are coming back to Pasco County, not least of which due to our tourism department and the great work that they do. You'll notice between 2017, 2018, we increased the tourism development tax from 2% to 4% to fund the debt service on the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Complex. But after declining in fiscal year 2021, and we're again expecting an increase in revenues in that area in '22. Local option fuel taxes, you'll notice in April, May, fuel taxes declined when most people were staying at home, and it took quite a while for these revenues to catch up. As a reminder, first, local option gas tax is used to repair existing roads, and the second local option gas tax is used to build new roads or expand capacity of existing roads. And so it took a long time for these fuel taxes to recover. But here, as we reach the end of the fiscal year, you can see that those, those taxes have recovered in this particular area.
A caution there would be is, as the price of gas increases, people will start figuring out how to do things differently, which would negatively impact this revenue source. And my guess is we're getting close to that pivot point here in Florida, at $3.50 to $4.00 a barrel, or gallon, sorry.
Well, there's been news today that somebody cut off a supply because of the current situation. That might jack a little bit more.
But that was the right thing to do.
I think we'll see.
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it might increase costs, I just...
Yes, some of the, some of the economists are projecting oil to be over $150 a barrel, which would be another 33% increase on your, on the gas prices.
Which would really drive people towards electric cars, and electric cars are not paying as much, nearly as much, for the use of the roads that the rest of us are. And so not to put a too fine a point on it, although we are expecting our revenues to increase, and in some cases, in some scenarios substantially, we are also expecting increases in our expenditures. So for example, the state's been kind enough to allow us to share the cost of Medicaid, and that's currently about $8 million a year, and that increases between $300,000 and $400,000 per year. We have employee health and retirement. We have, as Dan was talking about, the comp and class study coming up. We don't know what the impact of that will be. Indigent burials and cremations, this is not a large number, it's between $40,000 and $50,000 a year, but we wanted to bring this to your attention. We have inflation, which is going to keep driving up the cost of fuel vehicles, new and used vehicles are increasing at about 40%. And then capital needs, maintenance, those kinds of things, plus we have some new facilities opening, such as a couple of fire stations. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions? Anybody?
Well, there's the budget, the high-level budget schedule for you.
Yeah, I want to look at this.
And notice, we do have tentatively scheduled a workshop in late May to kind of go a little more detail into specifics of the budget. I will, again, to kind of echo what, you know, Bob said, it's going to be a challenge to maintain our current level of service across, across all our lines of businesses with the expenses that we see right now. So this isn't necessarily a year we're going to see a lot of new initiatives just because of just trying to maintain our level of service across the enterprise.
Madam Chair, could I just, one thing?
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am. Just something to think about, and Mr. Steinsaier, and I've, I've brought this up, had a conversation, I think on the dais, and maybe in private as well, and I think you and I have talked about it. When we talk about new growth can't always pay for itself. We've had this discussion on many occasions, especially when it comes to certain services that we have out there, common sense stuff, whether it be fire, whether it be, you know, sheriff's office, whether it be parks and recreation, on and on and on. Again, I'm not, I'm not looking for discussion or debate or anything like that, but just something to think about, because we'd have to look, really dig deep into this. But is there a possibility where we do make sure new growth actually pays for itself? What do we need to look into when new housing or apartment complexes, or whatever that product may be, comes into the county, that they do have to pay more to offset the costs, so that our current citizens are having to pay more for the services? So what can we do if anything, you know, led us, you know, and, you know, and again, I don't want to get into a debate about this today at all. This could be a long conversation. I know we got somebody else coming on board, but let's, again, between Mr. Steinsen and Dan and whomever, what can we do if anything to help satisfy the need that we're going to continue to have? And like you said, if we drop off, we're going to be in a pickle.
We'll take the question.
Yeah, I don't want to, I'm not looking into it today, just keeping it back in your minds, let's talk about it down the road, or in the workshop or something.
Yep. Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
This has been on my mind due to citizens' concerns, and of course, the infrastructure and everything. So I was wondering if we need to be readdressing and looking at the impact fees and the mobility fees, so we can stay caught up, making sure our infrastructure is caught up with our growth. And also, when it comes to Metropolitan Planning Organization, just looking at the future land use maps to make sure that our roads and our infrastructure is built. Because if we approve a project now, and it's not planning to be built for two, three, four, or five years from now, we can be working on those roads in advance. And my last question would be, is there a way to kind of pre-fund mobility or infrastructure costs? And then, when the builder comes in to build, or the developer comes in to build their community, then they can reimburse and pay back that fund?
Commissioner Mariano?
Thank you. You know, I think Pasco County led the way early on, with a lot of criticism about impact fees going up higher to help growth pay for itself as it comes in. And that doesn't take care of deficiencies, it only helps what's going to be coming. I think what used to be said was residential growth didn't pay for itself. But when you get higher-end residential growth, you see it in Seven Oaks, you see it in Starkey Ranch, that high tax base that's there, I think it fully pays its own way. More importantly, it's good executive housing, which is going to get you better companies that are going to want to come in the area, too. When you factor all that in, the demographics that we want to look at as we approve things and try to push things forward, it has a big factor for down the road, and I think we've done a very good job with that, we just need to keep going. I think Pasco County, you know, between the school system doing a great job as far as being a great place to attract people to come into the county as well, and I think the improvements we made between stormwater, all our services, going premier with our parks, et cetera, is making us a very desirable place. Now, Florida is right now, I think, because of our governmental leadership, and I mean, Governor DeSantis pushing the way to say, "Let's make Florida a great place to live." I think Florida's going to be a very desirable place for many years to come. I just want to make sure Pasco County as well is going to be a shining star in that growth, to getting all the right people coming in. I do think we need to focus on that redevelopment up and down 19, because that demographic used to be a lot stronger, when you had the retirees that had the pensions, that had the money to go spend money elsewhere. That's why Gulfview Mall has gone downhill, because the demographics don't support it. A lot of the, the strong commercial retail, as well as going from Wesley Chapel, they used to come over here to spend, it's not in Wesley Chapel. Trinity has now got their own little base going with some great commercial, too. So the shift is going, but I think for us to look at everything, that redevelopment's going to be a big thing to look at as well, to keep up with everything.
Chairman. You know, I think there are some things that have been said here that make me want to definitely have another primer in development, impact fees, when does infrastructure come in, urban sprawl, the cost of services, when you put them out in the country versus in the urban core. There's a lot of planning principles that I think, you know, we're not planners, and maybe some people don't understand those principles, and we should talk about them, I think. And maybe as we've worked through the comp plan, we will be having those discussions. Commissioner Oakley.
All these things, I agree with Commissioner Mariano, we need to be looking at that. And also, while we're going through the budget process, we need to not forget about our staff, road and bridge, all the staff in different departments and all, because the entry level pay you have to pay now has come up. But if we don't think about those folks that are at the top, and spread them like they should be, and also don't forget about the people in the center of, from bottom to top, make sure we have the right levels of improvement in salaries for all of them. Because it's very important, because right now, we have some salaries that come in, the lower level, just walk on, you're only $2 from a person, then we use several years and has the knowledge of how to work equipment and stuff like that, they're too close. So it's got to be spread out.
I think they're doing salary studies.
So I know that's something we're going to look at, and I know that we're also working on a wages issue like that now, so we're doing that study, so.
All right, members, I want to try and get the bunnies done, so those folks don't have to come back and be here through dinnertime. So if you guys are okay with that, then we'll move on.
Now, Madam Chair, I do have two lunch meetings, just so you know.
Yeah, so let's, let's go. We'll quick on this one.
Mike can get through his slides in three minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mike Schumate, Director of Animal Services. R-58 is a presentation with a recommendation from Animal Services on the retail sale of rabbits.
And before you begin, R-59 is being pulled to the afternoon, so we'll be done with that after this.
So the primary complaints that you've heard from most of the advocates and citizens, pet rabbits being abandoned in large numbers throughout the county and throughout the area. There's a 90% mortality rate for rabbits being abandoned because they can't care for themselves in the wild. Most animal, Pasco animals, shelters do not routinely take in rabbits, that's true. Rabbits are the third most surrendered pet at shelters. Retail purchase of rabbits is an impulse buy with little knowledge and true ownership of cost or veterinary care. Honestly, that's true for most pets, even for shelter pets. Pasco retail pet stores in Pasco sell, well, we've calculated with what they've told us, we estimate they're selling about 732 a year. The next slide is just basically a lot of facts on rabbits. I think by now you've heard most of these, so I won't go into that anymore.
I thought they were called bunnies, but you're calling them kittens.
Oh, the babies.
Yeah.
Yes.
Who knew they were kittens?
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah.
It, it, there is an estimate that I came across that I wanted to share with you that is kind of interesting. It says 80% of rabbits sold either die, they're surrendered, or abandoned in their first year of ownership. So the number one reason that most of the rabbits are being abandoned or turned into shelters is the fact that there's too many rabbits in the household. They did not spay and neuter their rabbits, and rabbits quickly reproduce. Rabbits are raised for pleasure, show, meat, fur, and resource purposes. Some considerations for the board is that the chain pet stores source rabbits from out of state. We've been told by a regional manager that they bring them in at six weeks old, which is against Florida law. But the district, or the corporate office says that's not true, they only bring them in at eight weeks. Unknown number of rabbits from local breeders, online pet sales, and those sold at outdoor venues. Only one rabbit rescue in Pasco, and you've met them, that's the Sun Coast House Rabbit Rescue. They average one to two rabbits from Pasco surrenders. Now, they did more recently have one with about 12 rabbits in it. Only one nonprofit shelter in Pasco takes in pet rabbits. Other counties around us, they are considering bans. Hillsborough opted for education first. They looked at a possible moratorium for the Easter season, and they have asked their animal services to come back with a recommendation on a ban later. But they did opt for education at this time. Most of the shelters that do take in rabbits north of us, they take in agricultural animals as well. They don't take in that many, the most, I think Marion County maybe takes in 30 a year. Pasco only takes in 10 annually, and those are involuntary abandonments. We do have one nonprofit rescue in Pasco that takes in rabbits, they took in 20 rabbits last year. However, if you looked south of us just a little bit into Hillsborough, they took in 250 rabbits at the Tampa Bay Humane Society last year. So our recommendation to the board at this time is basically to direct animal services to initiate an ordinance amendment that would strictly focus on the prohibition of selling public places, such as the flea markets and stuff, and require the retail stores to have certificates of source. We are concerned about rabbits that come in from out of state, which we know, one of our retail suppliers, or they have three stores, they do bring them from Georgia. The rest of the recommendation is that the department will provide public education programming on rabbit ownership, public information on rehoming assistance, and resource support for the animal welfare organizations to help remedy the abandonment of pet rabbits. And some of that resource can be to help them with the spay and neuter of the rabbits that come into their rescues. That's it.
Okay. Board members?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
And we, I know we have, and I appreciate each and every one of you that have come and spoken and stuff. You know, I've had these conversations before on here, my fellow Commissioners know, we're a rescue home. I have two rescue dogs, both disabled, so obviously, you know, the challenges those can be. We also have a rabbit in my house, which was, I don't need to get into details or anything, but it was, you can say we fostered and adopted the rabbit as well. So I'm very familiar with rabbits. Ours is chipped and neutered, for example. And our rabbit has its own bedroom. Very, very large area in our bedroom that, when we took it in, we realized that's what that needed, and I even built a, gosh, I became a carpenter, and I'm not a carpenter, a very large decking area above the carpet, so it wouldn't be able to chew the carpet and choke on carpet, and it's, oh, it's got, oh, it's pretty amazing. It's pretty elaborate. It's pretty elaborate. And, and our, and I will say, our rabbit is like part of the family, and it loves our little dogs, and they play together, and they have a great time, and play outside, and all those types of things. So, again, I've said it before, we have a special place, and our hearts in my family for animals, especially rescues, and I go all the way back to rescuing a dog that we weren't told was pregnant. And we, and we fostered the dog, and it had nine babies in our kitchen at our home, and we had, not only did we have to foster one, we had to find homes for nine more puppies. And we found homes for each and every one of them, which was awesome. And then we ended up adopting the dog that we were fostering, because we spent so much time with it. So I can appreciate everything you guys are doing, and understand the plight and the things, what you're going forward with. And I will say this at the same time, you know, usually, you know, it took a while for us to go through the process when it came to dogs, and the adoption process. You know, this board, I think it was before Commissioner Fitzpatrick was here, but it was probably right before we moved forward with that. Typically, we do give a little bit of time, like is being suggested from Mr. Schumate from Animal Services, obviously the professional, you know, and his recommendation is the education side, and you saw what that is. You know, I guess you could say I'm on the fence, but we had this conversation, so I'm going to need to trust Mr. Schumate and his team to, you know, give this some time, see how it works, and if not, it needs to come back to us. And when we do this, when we amend this ordinance, is your thought, I guess, you know, is this a, we're going to look at it for six months, a year? What are your thoughts?
I think we definitely need some time so that we can actually start looking at the volume of rabbits we're talking about that are abandoned.
Right.
We want to hear that from the public, we want to hear it from the rabbit rescue, the other folks that work with rabbits in the county.
Yeah.
We want to see what the numbers are.
Yeah, I think, and I would, you know, I think, and I know you are, I think this is a perfect time, too, for our friends in the audience to be the stakeholders and work hand in hand, and keep in constant contact with Mr. Schumate and his team through this process as well. That's all I have.
All right. Well, I was just going to say, I was okay with the ban. We had a couple rabbits, and it didn't work out well for the rabbits. And our dog did not like our little, my daughter's little bunny, and so that didn't work out well. And when I was young, we had a bunny, and that bunny ended up folded up in the pullout sofa. We couldn't find it, and then we found it. It didn't work out well for that bunny either, so I don't think they're great pets. However, a friend of mine just showed me all the medals that their child just won with their rabbits at, from the fair. So I would have been okay with the ban. I would go to your leadership and bring it back to us, please, and let's see if we think we need the ban. Did you want to say something?
I just want to say, Mike, I appreciate you doing the research to it. I'm going to go with your recommendation, just to move it forward, and let's take a look at it. We always revisit it down the road, but let's just take it a step, so I'll move approval.
Second. All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to break for lunch. We'll be back at 1:30.
Right.
Yeah.[1783.41]